Is Sarah coming today Liz, do you know?
Uh, I haven't heard that she wasn't, so I'm assuming yes. I haven't heard otherwise. Let me check on it. Email real quick. Yeah, she... And I think that her committee has stuff on agenda too. Well, yeah, it does.
Yeah, we were...
Yep, she's here. So is Greg.
Hello, speaking, Liz.
Is she logging on then Liz?
Yes, she's joining. It says she's joining.
Okay, I'll wait for her then.
Liz, you lost me.
What do you mean?
I don't have, I don't have any pictures.
Uh, we see you, so on the bottom...
Says camera's not working.
Well, we can see you.
But I can't see anybody else.
Can you hear us?
Okay.
Can you see everybody now?
All set, thank you.
Okay. It still says Sarah's joining, so...
Mike, do you want me to wait?
Uh, yeah, we might as, if it says she's joining, we might as well wait.
Okay. Here, Sarah just said her computer's freezing.
Okay. Man, I can't do anything with her, um, with her name right now, so I guess I'll wait for it to pop back up or... Did she say she was restarting?
Yes.
Okay, here she goes again. Okay. Okay.
Ready? We're all on? Alright. So, the Finance Committee will start at 7:04 PM. We have two items to discuss. First is ordinance 2012 establishing the Retirement and Cared Benefit Funds. Does anyone have any questions or anything about this one? Nothing? Alright, but I'd like to make a motion to put it on second subsequent third read. Is that okay?
Good to be here.
Right, Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
I'm gonna vote yes, and Greg?
Yes.
Alright. For second, um, is ordinance 2013 authorizing contract with GoToIt for computer services? Does anyone have any questions about the contract or anything?
I have a question, Bridgette.
Yes.
Who updates the city email address? We have some employees that are still gone for months that are still, still listed as employees on email. Whose responsibility is that?
I don't, I would guess Kathleen, but I don't know.
We were, I, we were done, asked GoToIt to disable an account. I did, I mean, I, you know, I've never done it, but I, I, I believe it's GoToIt would disable it.
GoToIt would disable it, and sometimes, you know, depending on where you're seeing the names at, if you've ever used them to send an email to, they might still show up, even though they may have been taken off, but there are some on there that probably need to come off.
I, I do know, I do know, like, uh, like Bridget Henkel, her, if people email Bridget Henkel, it comes to Kathleen. Same thing with Mayor Patton, if people send an email address to her, it, it comes, you know, it, you know, it would come to my account. I'm not sure if, uh, when it's forwarded, it may show, you know, the former mayor's, uh, name or Bridget Henkel's name, but we could ask, uh, maybe ask that they, you know, perform a, uh, like an inventory list, see if there's people that we can remove. We, I know there was a, a person's name for, uh, for, uh, there was an HR person who was here a few years ago, I don't call her name. And and we had, uh, we just did like an HR address, you know, so we'll try to do more generic addresses when it's appropriate.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, I'd like to make a motion then to place this ordinance on second subsequent third read. Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to vote yes, and Greg?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I would also like to make a motion to remove the, um, budget and solid waste from our, from the Finance Committee's list of things pending in committee.
So moved.
What? Okay. Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Sarah?
No.
I vote yes. Greg?
Yes.
Okay, that's all for the Finance Committee. We end at 7:08 PM.
Okay, uh, so local government and community services will begin at 7:09 PM. We have one issue on the agenda tonight, and that is the issue of the Board of Control. Um, so before we get started, I will just go over quickly what is the Board of Control, uh, and then open the floor for discussion. So, the Board of Control is outlined in the City of Fairview Park's Charter, Article 7, Section 4. Um, it is laid out as, "The mayor, a member of council eligible to vote selected by council and directors of several departments established either by this charter or by ordinance, shall constitute a board of control. The mayor shall be ex officio president and shall appoint a secretary. The board keep a journal of its proceedings. The voting shall be taken by yeas and nays and entered into the journal, and the vote of a majority of all of the members of the board shall be necessary to adopt any question, motion, or order. All meetings of the board shall be open to the public. The maximum amount of any contracts which shall be entered into without prior approval of the Board of Control shall not exceed the limitations set by state law. The board shall have further powers and perform such further duties as shall be prescribed by ordinance." Uh, this was last amended in November of 1969. And so, the city uses the Board of Control to award all publicly bid contracts over $50,000. Um, I'd like to open the floor up for discussion on the issue of Board of Control.
Currently is on the Board of Control, Mayor.
Uh, it's consist, it's the mayor, the law director, the finance director, the service director, um, the member of council, and the, and I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
And for your, for your record, Maureen, um, Bill Minnick represents council as our representative there.
Thank you.
I brought up the question of, of Board of Control because I was wondering, it seems like the Board of Control has a lot of power over how our city spends money with only having one representative from council. And out of five people, only two of those members have been actually elected by the City of Fairview. The other three are appointed. And I was just wondering, is there something that we, have you looked at in the past to expand, to include all of council in this? Or more members of council, like the president and the at-large, or the finance chair and co-chair, or something like that?
So, Bridgette, for your, um, background, and I guess for anyone who is, is new to this discussion, it's quite a discussion, um, all through last year was a discussion, and I think Mike and Gray, or Mike and Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but even prior to last year, we debated this, um, for quite a while. We, there was a lot of thought put into, how do you eliminate the Board of Control? And the previous council spent a lot of time trying to decide if you were to eliminate the Board of Control, what would the new decision-making process look like? If you were to amend the Board of Control, what would the new decision process, or what would the new makeup of the Board of Control look like? Um, I'm happy to reopen that discussion. I, I would probably say, let's start by setting down a goal of priorities. You know, what do we want to change about the Board of Control? And I think that your point of there being two elected officials out of one, two, three, four, five, the five, oh, you're basically not giving the power to the elected people who can be held accountable in said manner.
Right.
What we have to do is, what are goals? If we would like to accomplish...
Sarah, I'm sorry for breaking up, man.
Alright, hang on. Is it any better?
Yeah.
It's a little rattling.
One second. Okay, my apologies, guys. Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Well, that's better.
Alright, I'll try to close some system resources too, to, to maybe make this go a little bit better. Um, so I think probably what we should do is set forth, what is the goal, what is the end process supposed to look like, or what are we trying to solve? And if we can do that, then we should be able to run all of our, um, ideas as to how we might go about changing the Board of Control and make sure that they pass that test. So, um, from what I heard, the first thing is, we want more people who are elected and thus accountable to our taxpayers and voters to be in charge of that decision than fewer. So, on a board of five, right now, it's three unelected, two elected. So, one is to shift it to those who are accountable to the taxpayer, right?
That's what I think. I don't know what everyone else thinks. Maureen, Greg?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, I'm curious, you know, it kind of, from, it's weighed very heavy on the mayor and obviously his team, you know, his, um, a, a, appointed staff. And so, that's where they become ultimately the ones most accountable, you know, as far as if they're choosing someone. It's the mayor, and what did you say, the, the law director, the service department, um, who else did you say?
Financing, finance, member of council.
Really is the mayor and his team, so to speak, that becomes the ones very weighing the most in terms of who they choose. As far as the member of council, it's really, probably they just become the contact to report back to council is how I'm picking up on it, without really any power, aside from the voice of council, if that's accurate.
That's accurate.
Okay, have, can I ask, have there been problems? You know, that would be another question.
Well, I guess that's, that's, that depends on... But, I mean, for as long as I've been on this council, we've had this discussion about the Board of Control. I mean, I, I myself have always felt that it was, um, an undemocratic body.
Sorry, I'm, I'm losing...
Can you hear me, Maureen?
No, I lost all your comments. It froze.
Yeah, we've, we've been discussing the Board of Control since, I mean, I've been at council since 2008. Probably since then. I, I mean, I've always felt that it was an undemocratic board, that it, um, you know, it, you know, it really put power just in the hands of the administration to make the most...
What's the reason then, why we haven't changed it in the past then? Has there been a, an underlying reason?
Well, well, yeah, I mean, I guess probably Mayor Patton and I butted heads about it over and over. Um, back in 2012, council drafted and passed an ordinance, it was a Responsible Bitter Ordinance, which essentially, um, laid a more stringent set of criteria on the Board of Control, rather than abolish it, which we discussed later on, but, um, the mayor vetoed, vetoed that ordinance after, obviously, after it passed. Um, this, this past charter review process, I re, I recommended that we abolish the Board of Control. Um, we discussed the hell out of it in committee, uh, probably for six weeks, and we really couldn't come to a consensus on what we wanted to do, so, Sarah and Bill are aware, so. And, uh, so that's, uh, that brings us to today.
If you, if you abolished it, then who will be the ones choosing?
City Council. I mean, the administration would basically go through the bidding process and bring, and bring the ordinance to city council, I mean, like most other ordinance is called for. It would just be gone through the legislative process rather than by this unelected, mostly unelected board.
Well, you, you know, you have full-time employees who are working in, in this process now, I mean, just, uh, you know, they have expertise in these areas who are on the Board of Control. Um, you have a part-time council. Um, so, you know, I think, you know, I mean, I'm not sure of the history behind why it was set up the way it was back in 1969, but that's something that people need to consider.
Mayor, I think, I think the expertise and the full-time employee should continue, uh, I mean, going over the bidding process and still have the, uh, the city engineer chime in and, and, and put out the plans and the specs, and the administration go over the bids, and then put it in ordinance form, and then turn it over to city council.
Well, when you do, what you do, you do that, you're gonna add six weeks to the process. And we have a short construction, uh, season here as well, so that's something that people need to consider. Uh, we're out, you know, we're typically behind, you know, we, you know, with a budget being passed, when it is usually in March, I mean, and I know that, you know, it's the first time we've, you know, my administration is still with the budget, I'm not sure if that's gonna change. But you do have a short window here, uh, from a construction season standpoint, so that's something also to consider.
So, I'm kinda, what comes to mind for me is kind of what, what Brian said, it did, like, was there an issue, was there a problem, why this became constantly discussed then? Cause, um, like, if it's been the same thing since 1969, I, I first wonder what causes this discussion to even be initiated? So, was it like...
The Gemini, that, that tons, look at all the problems we ended up with the Gemini, so if we had more...
Hold on, let's have one person talk at a time. Go ahead.
Yeah, the Gemini Center was ground zero of this entire discussion, of the, I mean, the, the multiple problems with the Gemini Center.
Greg, I can tell you that the Board of Control is no longer the, um, I guess, type of decision-making body that people go toward. A lot of municipalities have changed their, the way that they do their procurement, and they don't do it via Board of Control any longer. Uh, that was something established after, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, World War II. Uh, and as, as procurement, um, progressed in a lot of cities, there are other ways that it's being done, and that also has spurred some of the conversation, is just trying to make sure that we're in line with other municipalities.
And Mayor, to your point that about being, us being part-time employees in city council, isn't it our role in city council to make sure that the city spends its funds correctly? So, having us more involved in the spending process, we are responsible to the people who have elected us.
It's your job and my job, and our jobs, all of our jobs, so.
So, I don't, I think that us being part-time is, is not...
Well, I, I did, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just think it's something, you know, I haven't been involved in the prior discussions, I'm just putting all of this out there. And I do think that's an issue. I mean, this, a lot of these projects involve a lot of, you know, there's the, you know, they're very in-depth, there's a lot of, um, you know, there's a lot of complexities to it. And, you know, so, th, that's something to consider, you know, uh, when, when making this change. You know, um, I'm not sure with the other, uh, you know, the other forums that have been discussed, you know, but I'm just, that's just something I wanna mention. But, yeah, you know, um, so, that's why, you know...
We, every single week though, so if we would add a control, like every, at six o'clock every Monday, we wouldn't slow the process down at all, because we would still meet every single week.
Well, if you, i- i- if you're not voting every week, you know, if you're not, if you're just having a committee meeting and you're not, if you're gonna have the three reads, you might slow it down. But, you know, I, you know, I, that's just something to consider.
I think when Sarah mentioned that other municipalities have different formats, that would be something I'd, I'd be curious about, see what the different formats are. I definitely appreciate the fact that with, uh, the mayor's, you know, um, administrative team, you do bring different people that are communicating on a daily basis and have some expertise in working with different, you know, um, potential bidders and contractors. But then I do understand too, the council is the one that kind of becomes, you know, a checkpoint for the financial expenditures of our city. So, if we could blend the two, or even, as Bridgette suggested, to add, you know, more members of council to the Board of Control. You know, there's gotta be, I, as I said, what Sarah mentioned of other municipalities having different formats, it'd be interesting to hear what these certain formats are, and the up and downside. So, um, I know we had several laid out last year, and maybe I can dig them back out, um, at some point. But I know part of the reason that they, they chose, um, some of the other municipalities was to increase transparency. So, currently, our Board of Control meetings are open to the public. Um, however, they are ten in the morning on a weekday. I think, um, they're less, I think they're the only meeting that we run as a public meeting that is during the day. So, they are less accessible to residents than, say, a city council meeting, or a school board meeting, or a planning and design meeting. So, while it is open to the public, it's not viewed as, as transparent as if it was happening in this process. Um, Liz, you don't happen to have some of the documentation that, uh, Mr. McDonough had last year, do you? I didn't dig it out.
I did do, um, a chart. I sent out a questionnaire to all the Northeast Ohio municipal clerks, asking, one, if they had a Board of Control and what their thresholds were. So, I can send that out to everyone. I'm assuming not a lot of them have changed, but, um, I can send that out to everyone. I actually might be able to bring it up here, I don't know how in-depth you wanna look at it, but, um, there were, I wanna say at least thirty of them that responded to that. Um...
I'm looking up bor, Border Control agendas on our city website right now, and it doesn't look like there's a whole lot of activity on it.
We haven't had, since this administration has started, there has not been a...
It looks like the last one was Aug. 29th of 2019, is that, could that be right?
Well, we, we'll have it up because of the, um, legislation that we just are passing about 210, instruction on 210.
Yep.
Okay.
So, we will be having it, and it, so if there's not a lot of, of activity in it, then involving the entire city council doesn't seem like it would be that much of a problem then.
On Tuesday. Well, for 2019, there were, there were six meetings in 2019.
So, if we could group those six meetings to 6:30 before a committee meeting? So...
Well, that could be da- That could be dangerous on timing.
It's not for committee, they're like twenty minute long, these meetings.
Well, so Bridgette, there are a couple of things we need to consider, um, and this became a real issue last year. So, we had talked about simply adding all seven members of council to the Board of Control. If you do that, then we technically have a quorum of city council members in a non-city council meeting, and then it becomes a city council meeting. So, we couldn't put any more than three members on, which is, at that point where the discussion came, eliminated and created just as a legislative action in city council. In city council, okay.
Hey Sarah, can I say something really fast?
Please.
How do we, how does council handle, handle spending that's below the state threshold? How, how does the, how does the city, you know, spending that's below the state threshold?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking the mayor, you.
I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry.
How do we, how do we handle s- spending in a city that is below the state threshold of fifty thousand dollars at, at this, at this time?
Below, you said?
Below, yes.
It, it's voted on by council.
Right. I mean. In, in my opinion, it would be much simpler to just abolish the board of control and do everything through the legislative process. I mean, if you look at. I mean, who, who holds the purse print, the purse strings in the federal government? This is no different than the federal government.
Well, I'll, I'll just have to be honest. I am not as up to speed on it as you, Council President Kilbane and some of the others. And, you know, and, you know, so I'm, you know, this is a discussion. I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I don't, maybe you're. Planning on voting on it today. I'm not sure where to go, but I, I'd like to see that, you know, what the document that. Was put up earlier. I'd like to talk to my directors about it and, and, and see, you know, I think one of the things that we have discussed, I think Greg's on the call. Was having the, the uh, the board of control meetings, you know, prior to council. So people would, you know, that is. There's, there are people there, you know, the, the public is more inclined to be there, so. But, you know, let's uh. I'd wanna look into it a little more off, a little more in depth. And, you know, you're gonna go, you're gonna have to have a, uh, it's my understanding this has to be voted on by the, by the public as well.
Yeah, it's.
So I was gonna ask.
I thought our charter said that it could be changed by ordinance.
I don't know. This sounds like a big change, but I would be curious to see what the neighboring cities around us do. River, Bay, North Olmsted.
Yeah, same.
Westlake.
That chart that Liz had.
Most of them don't have a board of control. I know I talked to uh Mayor Trevor Elkins of um. One of the east side cities, while, while we were discussing the charter amendments and he said they had no board of control and any spending above three thousand dollars comes before council.
Well, according to the chart Liz just sent out, it says Rocky River Board of Control existing, yes. It's also yes in North Olmsted, uh Lakewood. I mean, this, this is kind of like a odd array of, of cities. I mean, it ranges from the ones by us and then like Brunswick is included in here. I don't know. I don't think we're comparable to Brunswick. Bay Village says no, so Rivers says yes.
Again, I just sent it to the, I sent it to the Northeast Ohio Municipal Clerks Assi- Association. I can, I mean. Try and get um, do a wider one for the state or just ask again to that group and ask that everyone, please, please respond. Um, it's just that, you know, people kind of respond to what they, what they can. I know North Olmsted sent me some documents for. How they do it. I think they do have a board of control, but there's something that happens before it gets to the board of control. And um, like, on, on there, there's a lot of them that don't or, you know, their threshold is below the public bidding.
See that, there's a lot of variation.
Yeah.
What, what is the argument or what is the rationale for having a board of control for expenditures over fifty thousand versus. Having it come before council? I'm just curious, why, why do people have board of controls?
Like, like, like uh Sarah was saying, I believe it's, it's, it's something that's outdated. I mean, it's been done away with. In most others, other states across America, so.
Yeah, it makes me wonder though, what was the originating thought process? Now Greg, I wasn't around in sixty-nine when this first was written, but um. Like, yeah, as, as, as Councilwoman Adler's saying, it makes me wonder why it was there at all, right?
Seems like a pretty big change we would make. I, I feel like giving us more voice on it doesn't sound like a bad idea, but to abolish something like this would be. Pretty large and then maybe if we feel we're still not getting the right, you know, movement or voice in those meetings, maybe then you, you look to do that, but that seems like a pretty big change to do right away.
Uh, well, like Mayor Cooney said, he's not familiar with it. And I think that we should, you know, let the mayor research and, and talk to his directors about it before we discuss it.
Am I reading it right though, that it could be changed by ordinance? So if we decide to add two members of council to it, it could be just. Changed by ordinance that way?
Good question for the law director, huh?
Well. I think Article twelve talks about amendments to charter.
Here's, it, it could be, to eliminate it, you would have to have it go on the ballot. The charter itself lets it be uh the, the number of members by committee. I mean, set by council, so you could set that by ordinance, but to totally eliminate. The board of control, you would have to put that on the ballot.
Thank you.
So if we just wanted to, such as Bridget mentioned, potentially adding a couple of members of council to it, just to. Probably have more informed council members know what's going on. That we could just do.
Yes, that could be done.
So, hey, uh Mayor Cooney, can I ask you a question?
You just did.
Right? The, cause you were on the uh review board, the charter review. Did you guys discuss this in the charter review?
We did talk about it. I don't recall any really lengthy discussions about abolishing it though.
That was my recommendation, that was my recommendation.
Yeah. Okay.
Now Mike, Mike, you said that this has been an issue for, gosh, what'd you say, almost ten years now?
Well, it sounds like it only became an issue at the Gemini time period, right? Isn't that the?
There was a lot of issues with, with the, obviously the Gemini project, like every contract basically.
Yeah, so it sounds like that's like really the only time there, this came up as a problem perceived by.
Well, I mean, yeah, tho- those contracts are a problem, but I mean, in my opinion, I, I feel it's just an undemocratic board. I mean, as, as Sarah said, I mean, there's, there's one, there's one council person on the board and an elected mayor, so there's two elected officials on a, on a board. Making the most costly and probably most important decisions in the city.
We vote them in though, too, right?
What's that? The mayor's appointees?
His directors, yeah, I mean, we all had a vote on those people to be.
They do, yeah, we, we uh, we approve the mayor's appointees, yes.
And the electric voted on the, the charter too, so I mean, they, but again, let's, I, I'd like to look at it some more.
Yeah.
I think one of the, again, some of the issues that concern me is, you know, not slowing down. Uh, work that needs to be done.
Yeah, I, I'd like, I'd be curious to know more of some of these other ones, cause some of the uh, wh- when it talks in this uh chart that's sent out, it, it tries to give a little bit of a description, but some of it's kind of vague. So.
Yes, I just asked for two basic questions. One, do you have a board of control? Two, if you have one, what are the thresholds and um. Basically, what do you do? I think, I believe I asked after, if it, if it hits. If it hits the public bidding threshold. So it wasn't. Any kind of deep, real detail asked for them, like why they do it, but that could be, I could follow up and do that.
But has the amount of fifty thousand been the, the threshold? How long has that number been in place?
Couple of years ago, it was twenty-five before that.
Okay.
Two thousand twelve, they changed it and it was in effect in thirteen.
Okay, sounds good.
Great, thank you, Sarah.
So it sounds to me like we should probably leave this in committee um for further discussion. I'll make a motion to um return this to committee?
Sounds good. Yes.
Okay, so wait, where's my table? Brian?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Bridget?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Awesome. So then um. Community services ends at seven thirty-seven PM.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks, guys.
All right, uh boards of commission reports, Brian?
Uh, nothing tonight.
No.
I'll stand by, Mike.
Uh. That's uh, Maureen?
Nothing, thank you.
Sarah?
Um, just since the last time we spoke, uh, school has been canceled for the remainder of the year. I think we all kind of know that. Um, and I know that the schools are trying to make some accommodations to help the at-home work go a little bit. Smooth for parents and children and everybody involved. So I know K through five has adjusted to a four-day schedule with a one-day catch-up period. Um, they're talking still about what they're gonna do in the upper grades if they need to. Um, but for right now, school is out of session. They are trying to figure out plans over the summer based on the board of cont, I'm sorry, the board of. Health and the state's recommendations for what schools should do in the fall. Um, so just kind of bear with everybody at the school board. We appreciate that.
Thanks, Sarah. Bridget?
Nothing tonight.
Greg?
Uh, nothing.
Brian, do you have anything for roundtable?
Uh, the only thing I was um, thought of today, I was wondering if we thought about, you know, usually we have the. Um, Memorial Day Parade in Fairview and I'm assuming that might be postponed or, or canceled. Um, if we could do anything virtually for, you know, the veterans or anything like that, that maybe we could uh. Think of or create instead of, instead of that parade, cause I'm, like I said, I'm assuming we probably can't do that.
Council president.
Works, something to think about, I guess.
Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, I was waiting to hear what Governor Dewine had to say today. You know, I, so I, I, the virtual idea is a nice idea. I was gonna reach out to the. The local post to see what uh, if they had and what their wishes were. I'd like to have some of that, but again, you know.
Right.
You know, it's, it's just. I haven't spoken to anybody and, and I will be reaching out to them later this week to see if they have anything planned. It will keep everybody posted.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Bill?
Well, I'll read receipt of a email from Mr. Schneider, referenced uh. The new RITA policy. Email Director of. Single today and uh, he and the mayor are working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen?
Yeah, I just uh want to extend a big thank you to Mayor Cooney um. That this past week I did get a, an email from a, a very desperate father of four who found himself unemployed and could get in contact with no one. In order to get his unemployment checks and he was, he was just at his wit's end as far as who to reach out to. So he thought, what the heck, I'll reach out to my councilwoman. I in turn reached out to Mayor Cooney, who was able to connect this um, this man with someone from David Greenspan's office. Who then got everything rolling and gave this man ultimately what he really needed, someone just to talk to, to address some of the issues he was having. He was very, very appreciative of the, you know, responsiveness of our administration and how personally, you know, Mayor. To give this man a name, a number and a contact so that he could um. You know, move forward in getting the unemployment that he needed to support his family. So thank you, Mayor, and your staff for jumping right on that. I know this gentleman was quite grateful.
Yeah, I'm glad, glad we could, he was able to get some help.
Sarah?
I no report this evening.
Bridget?
Nothing.
Greg?
No, there are nothing.
Liz, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Mayor, do you have anything that you want to say before I uh call for a motion to uh go into executive session?
So with respect to the Rita uh, uh matter, we, we are aware of it, have been aware of it. I know Director Single has talked to folks at Rita about it. Uh, it's um. I'm not sure, based on what the governor said today, uh if, I think his stay-at-home order is remaining in effect. He's making some. Amendments to it, so I'm not sure if uh that period of time then, you know, continues. It's my understanding that thirty days after the lifting of that order. Uh, that's when this will come into play. You know, obviously uh this would have a major impact on employment centers like Cleveland. Uh, Columbus, the, the major metropolitan areas. Uh, and I, it's, it's something that will be. Likely a lawsuit. Um, it's my understanding that uh, one, a state senator has asked the tax commissioner. To provide his opinion as to um how this matter should be handled. And I think uh because of the complexity uh that it would um bring for uh agencies like Rita. Uh, CCA, uh which is the Cleveland entity. You know, I don't think anything's really gonna happen until there's been a little, you know, you know, some direction from the tax commissioner or from the court. If you, as you can imagine, if somebody um works in Cleveland and has had withholding paid to CCA. Um, how does Rita, you know. Know all that? There's just, there's be a lot of things that have to play out. And again, I know uh Director Single has been in touch with Rita about this. Uh, prior to, you know, this was something that we were aware of and will keep, keep you informed, but. I know he did talk to Rita earlier today, I believe. And um, that's, that's the. You know, that's the status, you know, we'll keep an eye on it and see what we can do to be beneficial to our residents and to our city. Keep you posted.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor.
True.
Okay, uh, the mayor has um sent a memo requesting an executive session be held this evening. Well, I will entertain a motion to. Move into executive session to address personnel and employment matters as outlined in Article fifteen, sections one and four of the charter. More specifically, section one to consider compensation of a public employee or official. Section four, preparing for, conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation. Or other terms and commission, conditions of their employment. Is there any discussion? Hearing number of clerk, please call roll on the motion to move into executive session.
Mr. Semerly?
Yes.
Mr. Minnick?
Yes.
Mrs. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Cobain?
Yes.
Mrs. Waring?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Council is now in executive session.